Well, good morning. I know I'm not quite as good looking as David Cook, but he has left Jody and I in his much deserved retirement. Just, I think, the best advisory group that KDE has. So, because we have muffins, quite honestly, from Jody. So, but no, really, it's a joy to continue working with you all, but less as a speaker now and more in the liaison role. So, really excited to be here with you all. We hope that you continue to find value in transitioning these meetings to these in-person sessions. I know that we've, you know, had a much higher turnout. Folks are already in a place, so why not take advantage when we're all together? So, really appreciate your time today in the busyness that is the Summer Leadership Institute. So, we're excited to get things started. Have some wonderful guests with us today that we'll introduce along the way, but just a few housekeeping items to get us started. We'll go through the next 90 minutes with you. Jody will help us get things started with our roll call. Myself being new in this liaison space and some of you being new to one another, want to take time to do some introductions around the room. Dr. Fletcher, our commissioner, is here with us today to share a little bit of his vision for the department's work and for what's ahead for education in our state as he transitions to lead. And then we'll hear from Dr. Brian Perry is with us for legislative update. We have Blake Conny. Blake Conny is with us today to talk about bullying resources and discussion, an item that we know was a high priority on your agenda request. And then I'll share a little bit more with you about our Kentucky Innovation Guide, a new resource that we have that I hope will be very beneficial to you as you think about next steps for your districts. And we'll pass things over to our Chair David at the end just to facilitate any kind of remaining questions and discussion that this group would like to have. And we'll, of course, take time to get some feedback from you and any future agenda items that you would like to note for us so that we can plan accordingly as we come back together in December. So. All right, Jody, do you want to run through our role and just confirm who's here with us?
I don't like time.
We'll take, we'll take it.
Yeah. Dr. Akoji. Diane Berry. Larry Dodson. Linda Duncan. Julia Fisher.
Yeah.
Joanna Frails.
Here.
Michelle Hamilton. Joanna Hinton. Vanita Murphy. Brenda Rose.
Yes.
Brandon Rutherford.
Here.
David Webster. Carl Wickland.
And I know that our processes might be changing just a little bit. I want to make sure that we're doing due diligence with our advisory group protocols. So, just want to take a moment to go through your February meeting minutes as well. Jody did a fantastic job. I believe she just sent that out to your emails. We will do a, it's just something in hindsight that I will make sure that you get in advance of future meetings. But just want to review, in February, you all came together. David, still in the liaison role, received an interim commissioner's update from Dr. Robin Kenny. Also came together to discuss guidance implications on using artificial intelligence as a learning partner with Dr. Marty Park from the department and received a 2024 legislative update from Dr. Brian Perry as well. Jody takes fantastic notes during the meeting. So, I just want to take a moment to see if we have a motion to approve your February meeting minutes.
Same.
Can I just get a name again? I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Diane.
Diane Berry. And who's second?
Two of us two.
Thank you. All right, wonderful. Been fussing with this technology all morning, so apologize. Okay, so let's just start out with some introductions. We thank you for entertaining this U shape. I was just saying to a few folks, the middle school teacher and me couldn't quite handle the rows that came all the way to the front this morning if we're going to be discussing and engaging with each other. So, thank you for perhaps being a little uncomfortable. I just wanted, you know, to be able to really collaborate today in some great discussion. Let's start off, we'll just start here if we could. If you'll introduce yourself by name, the school district that you represent. One positive highlight or celebration that you want to lift up around your community or your school district from the last school year or even heading into the new school year? Anything that you want to celebrate, doesn't have to be district, could be your community at large, but just want to give you some space to celebrate and lift that up.
I'm Linda Duncan, Jefferson County Public School. And I've been on the board for 18 years there now. Been leading for 18 years. But one of the things I would really like to celebrate that people just don't realize is going on is 80.5% of my seniors who graduated last year were either college ready or industry ready, career ready, had industries. And that's a phenomenal, and statistically, we came 30, when I first was on this school, 34% being career ready, college ready. Now, it's a 80.5% who actually act like they know their good things. And I think that's a true success.
I'll run right to Fletcher on the subject. Good start. We probably try and do for them. It's the history. I say this because I've traveled all the way to the school. That's the thing, my students. We just, a lot of our staff members in Florida, it's been strong. And we just had a school, a school of steech. Temporarily. Super praise, they have to do this. Graciously. And they've got a board. And I still look a lot better. That's the difference, that's real. We don't want to, want to feel.
Brandon Rutherford, down to over six years, Madison County. One thing that I think I'm proud of is we built two new ATCs, CTCs. And the last couple of years, we got industry coming in, hiring, was any job offer to reduce. So, there are even senior years, just go different rates, especially like 12%. And I think that's a, that's really good for all of their communities. And we've expanded this program to all of our math classes. So, get different coming, I'll take 12%. So, our ATCs and CTCs are venue for daylight back.
I'm Julia Fisher, and I'm Dr. Fletcher. I told you I'm not going to pretend, which I am super proud of, but I'm Campbell County. I forgot some of you. There's, I mean, there's so much. I've been so about a community. We're a small community, just a mile square. So, all of the kids, it's a great community. But that's, but that's how summer, all the dog, everything's small. And all our experts are there and saying, you know, doing so much with their schools. So, yeah, I have 0.2 million dollars for staying with you. You're a part of our own industry school. Actually going to, since the 60s, we've been. Now, we're going to have actually a cafeteria level, right? So, they have cafeteria and the gym, which is pretty solid. And then other really exciting things to community, you know, is we are having our full sports conference. We, you know, ready to have some, we have concession. We have significantly to have concessions, to have a field, just so many things. And that's simply the community that's wanting to grow lives. There's, we did a fascinating process. And that's what we said before, so I need to sit in class and do this.
Go back to your.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to. I was just, I didn't want to, I got to my goal, but that's why I still do it.
Oh, feel free to move too. Feel free, come on down.
I'm Dr. Akoji from Public Independence School. And recently, we have two state of the park buildings, innovation, obviously, that come from or land count and other county schools to learn behind some technology and technology. And we have the, all the best, yes, are building in the states where we have over 250 post-graduates. And we have, we have so much stuff on different parts of the state. So, coming to the, you can, you can buy, you have to, you can go to the technology and innovation case you rely on. And I believe that's all I have to say about my experience.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Joanna Frails, and I'm from Best County. And the best school system in the state is Shelby County. Our, our main focus, well, this whole year, well, since Christmas, has been our superintendent, who I would refer to in the whole state, that acutely came in. And so, our whole community, school system has rallied around her and the school district all year. So, it's, it's been hard. We did, we have selected a new superintendent, who's Dr. Josh Matthews. And we wish him all the best. The main, one of the main things in Shelby County is how the community and the school system works hand in hand together. All the new industries that's coming in, the first thing that goes with their thought is how our county and schools are going to benefit from the taxes that are coming in from these industries. We just got a report this week that Ford Company, Motor Company, Baby Company, Shelby County, it's going to have 300 and something jobs. And then there's about two or three other companies that are coming that will have a total of 3,000, although I don't know whether one will be of anyone. Our community works hand in hand. And I think that's the key to a good school system. And Dr. Sully was real good about getting us all involved with each other. So, that's what I think I'm blessed with.
Thank you.
My name is Vanita Murphy, and I'm from Webster County. And we've had very successful last year and looking forward to a very successful this year, this year. We have, our top thing is that we've got, all of our schools have resource officers. We were proud of that. We've got four grade schools and one middle school and a high school. So, we're very proud that we've got the whole county public. We didn't have the two schools at first. And we finally got the money to engage some officers for our schools. So, we're very proud of that. And we also had a good turnout for our graduation. We've just had a great year. It's just been great. We've got a second year superintendent, Aaron Harold. And he's doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. Want to break?
Great to read something that, you know, I've spoken on every close podcast. It's one of them, I've had a whole lot of things. One of them is our new CTE building that we have that offers welding devices. And we also have a night time for adults and things all over very well in our community. And we also have that engineering person is funny. And to build it, we built some things that people that really need it. And the community has called on us to weld things for it. The stickers have done, and things like that, which is what's there. And we have a new hot pot screen house that has just surged. It has been during the school year, which laid up like, you know, the farmers and stuff in area of the summer. But they sell their lettuce and neighbors and things to the restaurants. And then our drivers and students take it around and deliver it as they're driving. So, that's involved in everybody. Things are going well for us.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Berry, Nelson County. Truly though, we, we have had things to celebrate other than, what's going on? But we got a grant for our ATC, which will be called the Up Center. A $20 million grant, we finished that. We're going to take a little school in New Haven, Kentucky. And that will be a P5, P5 school. We're also, we put some kids over at middle school so we can give those middle schoolers golden opportunities because it was so small in New Haven, it didn't happen a little over a hundred kids. So, we put those kids over in a, in a, in a situation where we can offer them more classes, more opportunities. We've been very successful over in the Up Center. We've had the welding kids have finished in the top five in the state. We've had some athletics, athletes that have finished in the top five in AAU. We're very proud of what we've accomplished as far as our seniors' graduation and 90.8%. I mean, there's just golden opportunities in Nelson County. We produce more than bourbon, put it that way, okay? Yes, yes. So, we're doing real well.
Larry Dodson, Olden County, we're one of the lucky districts. We got the silver nickels. Yeah, tell me about it. Well, worth it. I got a couple of things we're proud of. We're redoing all our athletic fields, all the torch lights, concession stands, scoreboard, and all the football fields. Then it's done. This, now we're doing the soccer fields, hopefully make sure the baseball and softball. Secondly, we're in the process of getting ready to build a new elementary school. But the one thing I'm most proud of, it wasn't pushing board for eight years. And y'all will be getting a hit on it soon, I'm sure, with hopefully by September, a new art center.
Thank you.
And that's going to be the thing of the future for us because our art program is fantastic. And that's one thing that I'm most proud of, so.
Well, as one of those students, thank you for investing in the arts. I just, you know, knowing that you could have lifted up your school district or community, it's wonderful to hear that so many of you can do both at the same time because of the partnerships that you have as board members. Just want to quickly introduce, you know, Jody well. She keeps us fed with the most amazing treats. I don't ever want to lose her as team member. But if I do, I'm only going to settle if it's to open her own bakery. I am Sarah Snipes, formerly our Division of Innovations Program Manager and transitioned in David's retirement to Director. So, very, very big shoes to fill, hoping to do that role justice in getting started in my own transition. Speaking of community, and I'm sorry, I'll work on this screen here in just a minute because I know that's not the greatest view to have. But speaking of community, just want to introduce to you our commissioner, Dr. Fletcher. Had a privilege to work with him in initiatives related to United We Learn, such as our local laboratories of learning, L3s, as he led Lawrence County through that process. So, I know that this man knows community, believes firmly in the work that you all are doing. So, thank you so much, Dr. Fletcher, for being here with us today. I'm going to pass things over to you.
Well, first of all, thank you. Appreciate it. And I've had the opportunity, I think, except for our label over here, that came in a little bit, a little bit late. I'll shake your hand too before I leave. Had the opportunity to shake everyone's hand, so I was very thankful for that. And the connections too, I think I know every single one of your students either in my face, by name, or by email or by some other. Because of the superintendents, and I was superintendent 10 years. Over the 10 years, the, I've been most impressed with how well the superintendents have grown as far as networking. Yes, we want to win on Friday nights. Yes, we want to win. We've got the academic buzzers in our hand. But also too, I've seen such a push to lift each other up and which only benefits our kids. And my thing today is what we're about. I do want to brag on my school for just a second. Everybody else got the opportunity that I wanted to share with you. Is that KDE, Kathy Gallagher, who is our summer, summer feeding program director, just received a national award for her work in feeding. Now, the reason why I highlight that is because all of you involved. Goes through your schools, it goes through your communities. So, it may, it's not your school, it's a hybrid area from your area or maybe some other, some other area too that it may go through. But in the last year, with our partnership with you and with Kathy Gallagher and Kathy Hillman, we went from feeding for the months of May and June, 2.5-ish million meals, which is phenomenal. So, this year, for the same May and June of 2024, it's 3.9. And that's phenomenal because when we meet kids physically, it's excellent. Prosperous. So, thank you as well, Mrs. For pushing your district or supporting your district for not only summer, but any other time, whether it be drag and go during the day or it be breakfast in the morning, you know, trying to encourage your students to be a part of that. Thank you. Because it is so important. We're not just an education agency. We also take care of physical or social, other needs as well. So, thank you for that partnership. And I got to brag on my school, our school is, you know. As far as visiting and moving forward, I will talk to you just a little bit where I've been. Just, I don't want to take too long to do that. But I know we've got a very busy agenda and where I would like to go. So, for me personally, and you'll, you'll hear some of this probably later on, but I'll, I'll try not to overlap too much. I was a, as a superintendent, well, let's move on back. My first start, got into teaching as a Williams County student. And I walked into that Williams County superintendent and there were state assistance. You know, we were familiar with HSEs, we're familiar with state assistance. And as a matter of fact, once upon a time, Simpson County was a PLA district, no longer. And they've come so far. And I was one of those, part of one of those districts at the same time as Simpson County. But anyway, we had what was called VE, stainless edge papers. And we were told, I'm a first year teacher, if they saw something they didn't want, they could send you home, I think, on the spot, all because of testing. Testing was the thing. If you did not hit a test score, you're out the door. So, it's my introduction into education as a teacher was high stakes, pressure. Fast forward, I went on to Burden County after that. I had a great, great stint at Williams County, loved it. But I got married, and I wanted to bring Fletcher to home. I'm going to go with a lady by the name of Melissa Carol Henry Fletcher. Mrs. Henry Fletcher, she's a family physician. I chased her for about seven years before I could talk to her. So, so anyway, this took a little bit of time to wear down, but I finally do. But with that being said, she was resident in the UK, so I had moved a little closer. So, I went to Burden County. Wasn't any type of state assistance. So, it was, I taught AP calculus, taught Algebra II, calculus, and math. At Williams County, taught advanced physics, I taught different things as far as math and science. And then we were very clear, we're going to move home. And I'm from the mountains. I finished from South, we want to move home. As soon as we were finished, we were going to move home, we were going to make room. So, my first experience was that I moved to the, I'm Miss Miller. And I was a teacher who had HSEs. So, that's why we're thinking about test scores, we got test scores. And so, early on, I've been writing that test scores, is this what's a test score or not? Had great people to work through. They, don't, don't get me wrong, had an excellent lady, Thomas, who actually passed away while she was in, I actually was a mom and lady to work with. I learned so much from HSEs. So, please don't think I'm talking negatively about the kingdom. Possibly, it was all positive, but from the public perspective, we felt it was. And then I had the opportunity to move into a role and actually the national activity student who was a good life school. We worked there for four years. We had a turnaround. By the end of it, we were no longer a good life school. We met all our AYP goals, and we remember annual yearly progress. We met all those, we celebrated, we were so happy, we put banners up everywhere. But that's not what I believe in. So, after that type of success, they said, well, what about Shelby High School? Which was also a high school, I think, we're going into, which is also a good life school. So, that's why we live out of test scores. I got good test scores. More than just playing games. I won't say I got good, but I mean, I got good time to meet kids. And that's in here. So, please don't, I'm not trying to down for it. But the pressure from the high stakes accountability was so strong. But you felt like it was hard to enjoy what you do every day because waiting for that one window of testing snatched on time. So, but blessed to have worked with a great team, great teachers. And the banner that came out was, yes, we did. Shelby County never met. They're valid. But we met for three to six years, actually we met two years. And then, and my third year, I moved on to be a superintendent. And that, but it's about. Now, I went to Orange County, moved to District of Orange County. Guess what? They're persistent, form, both forming official. So, we put our gang plan together, our team together. We met the academic needs of kids. We became successful. We tested out a few of them. We were distinguished at high school, distinguished dogs, as we called our bulldogs at high school. We put banners up and down Bulldog Lane, we celebrated, we, we were so ecstatic. About two weeks in, I was stuck with them. So, this is where I'm at, Fletcher. It all began. We're going to buy that person, I'm like, are you kidding me? We just met all these goals Lawrence County never met in 10 years. We met up, we did the same thing. We met all these academics, but kids are getting better at taking a test. So, after taking a deep breath and listening to a person and taking them, probably about two or three weeks to really digest, we wanted it. Had so many kids that were dropping out and taking jobs. Probably making that money, a lot of our teachers. We did as well, which went on to some type of certification, talking about maybe KWRs or something. And there was some work if they're technically, but we weren't making that money. So, we decided we got it. Now, our test score stayed, you'll get it. We met the academic needs of our kids, and we're probably at some of the highest test scores we've ever had, as a matter of fact, through the top four and 15, 16, 13 you can buy. But a lot of that came from our through taking industry service classes. So, we made that push to make sure that all of our kids need money. I don't care if you don't want to take the ACT. I do care if you're going to be successful at the next level. How do you want to do that? If you want to go to college, we want to give you every opportunity for absolute highest ACT score possible. But if you want to go to a pre-chaic, that is just as important. And in this day and time, it may be a little more important because we're looking for so many workers out there. So, our focus changed. We tried to get all students, bring all students, we'll all NLC, so that we met the needs of our students. And now moving forward, how can we change that sort of accountability really meets the needs of all of our kids? So many of you in the room have a fortunate one. Question you, I don't want you to answer. So, I'm not trying to pummel you by, I use the picture. Or is it making a difference in vision? I know some, I know some of the work we, fortunately, we are. I know if changing the kid's experience. But what is that accountability accountability? How can we actually hold ourselves accountable, say, we're teaching kids how to be collaborators? We're teaching kids how to be communicators? We're teaching them how to not just survive, in my opinion, to thrive? Yes, academics are extremely important. Yes, industry certification is very important. But we're not going to be successful unless we can also teach them the substance. So, next thing, as I've grown and as I've learned is, how do we make sure that we hold our kids? We want every single kid to be able to read at a high level, to be able to do mathematics at high. But also too, we want them to be able to have those vibrant learning experiences where they have the opportunity to do internships. We have, and many of you are doing these things already. I applaud you. But also too, how can you get them? For example, I've talked to several districts that have people, have kids in their senior year, go out and be teachers of this, in their districts. Those are, that's a vibrant learning experience. Also do defenses of learning. And how can a kid at the, at the end of their Shelby County, is one of the, one of the people if you want to go to, go Shelby County, find out how that's worked. With James Knott Hall, who started that work, and Sally continued that and also added to that work, I'm sure you do your potential to do the same. Um, with James Knott Hall, who started that work and Sally continued that and also added to that work. I'm sure you do your potential to do the same. But those defenses of learning really allow the kid to be. Also protect the program. And we're gonna have to have people that are so nimble once they graduate, because we don't know what the job is gonna look like. Be able to, yes, we want to use your certifications. Yes, we want, we want doctors and lawyers, because I think we can have some of the best doctors in the world, possibly physician. But what are we going to decide to go to? And how can we use leverage our accountability system to help that out? So next steps for us, there's a huge focus on accountability, what that new system look like, and also consistency. How many times the accountability system change or like safety. Exactly. You know, I, I don't think, if I were to take my shoes off and use my fingers and toes, it might be getting. What are we doing? But here's the thing is, once we settle on something, let's make it a little more lasting. I'm not saying keep it, we, let's do it, let's, let's make sure that we have a focus. Now, after four years, four or five years, it may need to be reviewed. Or will not be super, sorry, permission for eight years. That what has to happen, but if that being said, some of that longevity, consistency. So yeah, I didn't mean to take as much time, but if you have any questions for me, do we have a quick answer? Any, any quick questions you can make.
Just expanding on what you was to talk about, it's one of the things that when I started at Tennessee County at the top to get them. And it's not just teaching, we, you know, they ATC, tech tech centers, you know, back in the day, that's where all the bad kids got seen.
Yeah, me too.
They're trouble kids, they got on the bus, they went there. So we changed that whole philosophy with our ATC, CTCs. We make our kids to write applications to apply, just like college. We're letting everybody have, but they don't know that. You know, it gives them some responsibility of accountability. But also something we started doing instead of just, you know, training kids to be teachers or welders or whatever. It's about community. This is the future of our community. So we've got to engage all these kids. Every, every kid that's in our system is gonna be a leader of some sort in our community at some point. Whether it's a mayor, a judge executive, a barber, a doctor, whatever it is, we've got to take each one of those kids. And teach them to do what they want to do. You know, most kids know what they want. If you're asking what you want to do. In kindergarten, I mean, I want to be a farmer. That's why I'm going to be always running schools. A farmer. I didn't want to go to college. So you know what that did me? Sent me right in front of the room to let it go towards their. Call it a ready test, but they didn't care about it. So I just sent them back to the room, told them pass the D, I was good. Nobody cared. What do you have to do? So now we changed the philosophy. We don't care what you want to do. What do we have to do to help you?
And you know, a big part of that too is collaboration with communities. If you look at one of the, it's a part of education, it's a people plan. One deals with vibrant learning, teaching students. The other is innovation and accountability, especially. The last part is we have to promote collaboration with communities because we want our kids to come back. Well, I love to have, when I was in Lawrence County, I loved to have the best and brightest from other areas, but I could keep my people there, but I'm not everyone's stuff. And make a, make a big contribution like we had added a fire science pathway. Yeah, I think we're one of the few Eastern seventy five that have fire science pathway. Because we had kids that wanted to do it and we had a community that will do it. And that came from asking our community, what do we need? Asking our kids, what do you want to do? Now I think from what I know, Madison County and, and a lot of your counties, we're doing better, a better job of asking our kids, what do you want? How, if we can't do it or we do it, then how do we connect with a protect the, uh, college university like that? So back in ninety two, I didn't get to take small engines. You know why? Because I was gonna go to college and it could fit into my schedule. I regret that to this day.
Well, in ninety two, I had, we had six periods, four of my periods were at class, because I wasn't going to college. So I was in panic right off.
Where I see a problem in Shelby County, not a problem, well, it is what you need. We have so many Hispanics, twenty five percent of our school systems is Hispanics. And when they have to take the test. That doesn't help us by test scores. So that's why I don't see a real importance on the numbers of the test scores. Because they're really, these children are really bright students, but it's a language barrier. We don't have enough people. That works with them and, um, that's, that's the real problem. We have a, a little area.
Yeah, well, the English, English language learner, oh, even here in Old Green, Babys County, Shelby County, it, it's exploded. It really is. And how do we make those kids, how do we make them productive members of society? How do we, how do we love them? How do we love them first? I should say that first and foremost, but also to make them feel part of the community and how do we get them what they need to be? So to me, it's more about, uh, for those students, it's just like bringing up a student, what do you want to do? After when you help you get there. Yeah, there may have to be some more, uh, props along the way, some accommodations along the way, uh, some extra help along the way. But we still owe it to every one of those kids, our students.
That's exactly why I was going to talk about. Is there any hope of reducing that proficiency score? I mean, it's forty five percent of hands in assessment. Is there any way of making that smaller? Because in Jefferson County, with a hundred and sixty five individuals and. And our population exploding like that, that, that proficiency score is meaningless. We have this big bunch at the bottom and we have the top being added in. So you, you pick a point in the middle. It's meaningless about revealing what's really going to mean. But is there any hope of reducing that so that it's not forty five percent?
Well, one of the things that we now we did, and there's some prototypes out there of what the next accountability system look like. So, and why I bring that up is we, we had a superintendent webcast where we, we presented this, there were superintendents involved, uh, you know, it was open, all superintendents. Uh, and then actually went over the prototypes, we asked for input. So it's very important that whether you're, you're district assessment coordinator, somebody on the team gives us back input and that's the things we need. Because if you look at the English language learner, we just, it is a growth sport by nature. But how fair is it to have it such a large percentage? The, the goal there is how do we help every kid grow, every single kid grow. So to me, it's more about that child's growth than it is maybe their proficiency. That makes sense. But we need to hear those type of things and put that into the survey that's out there and it's, and it's been sent out all week. I think we started, uh, last Tuesday, we're putting that information out, but we need to hear that. So make sure that your superintendent, your district assessment coordinator, whoever's in charge of your, uh, of your accountability systems. Uh, make sure it gives that input, because those are the things we need. But to answer your question, yes, it is. Absolutely.
I have, my thing in Nelson County is, uh, the ATC, your question. And collaborations and that's probably my lead to me. I mean, I have no, it's the college bound students that I am concerned because. They're, you know, when you've got a kid that wants to be a doctor and we have not given that child the best help we can. To test, not to pass, but to make a really outstanding A C T that, that bothers me. Because we're not prepping, we're not, you know, the, uh, we're not giving them enough opportunity in my eyes. And like in our, in our system, going to do a print, because it's hard to kind of do that.
Well, I will tell you this, one of the things that we did in Lawrence, we actually offered a bonus to a teacher that was, that was teaching. So what we did was every single time, every single, uh, section that a teacher taught, they got two thousand dollar bonus. At Christmas and whatever, however many section they taught at the end, we gave them another two. So I had one teacher that talked English one, English two, so two sections of English, going to first semester, got four thousand dollars bonus at Christmas. And two sections of the other, we got. So we were able to draw up the Marshall University, those people that were able to, to teach. Now, but after that, the partnerships with universities.
Yes.
Brian, you're standing there. You got a question? I thought you might want to add an increase in that. But again, but I think it's key to have those partnerships and I'm sure there's around this room, you folks. A Houston Tech University, I know that. Yeah, I didn't think about that, but those types of partnerships.
That's true, but it's similar in that high school range where you're.
Well, you do, keep in mind, you're also talking to a former faculty student. So those upper level math classes to me and those upper level are very. Those upper level, uh, AP biology, AP chemistry, all those AP courses are just as important. As your career. Because you know what, there's a cube that needs. And it's one like, yes, sir.
Um, the district, uh, the. It's kind of like this. Closing the experiment. Much of our students. We give them to college. So we're starting to, uh, this preparing them for college and. When that goes, we're using why we're built in which of them. Some of the students will graduate from high school. Ten forty five thousand because I need to, without you. And we have so many things that can do. By the time they graduate from, uh, from high school, you're only get a job for almost ten fifty five thousand is due. You know, so we're dealing. Preparing them, just them to go to college and also to.
But I'm gonna close with this comment, so we can move on to the agenda. As a parent, for children. First one is a, is a medical student you had, all the mothers, footsteps, she is the carbon copy of her mother. I pray she work better. She just finished her first year medical student. All the sons as well. And I, I became married as a sophomore. I said, Dad, I don't want to go to college. So okay, what do you want to do? So I want to do well. I said, you're gonna do the best that you can do. But that's awesome. He's like, what's it mean? Mom's a doctor, mom's a doctor, you're a superintendent. I said, yes, you're gonna be the best girl ever. So my second, you know, the curriculum. And then my third, just practice around that. No, he's, he's a great young man. I think he's gonna go the business route. He's gonna be a senior. He thinks he's gonna be a baseball player all the way through. I will say this, in the past year, he's gotten so more, so much more focused on business, marketing and things like that. So I'm really proud. See, I give him a hard time, but his initials are E and A enough. Anyway, that's Eli. But again, just from a personal aspect, I believe in all aspects, all kids. I wanted my daughter to have AP biology, AP chemistry, the dual credit opportunities. But my son also had dual credit opportunities with them, with ACTC, actually with technical. He actually went on campus half a day and did well. He got up at five AM. So he gets started at seven, so they didn't interfere with his baseball later on, because he wrote baseball. But it was important, you know, important that they paid for gas, uh, to for him to go to ACTC. So how do we support kids no matter where they are? And I believe my family's.
You're a good dad and mom.
I will, I don't know about that, but.
Might be a poor one by now.
No, she won't brag with it. She has a poor riding.
It's good for her.
I'm just like I said, she's a carbon copy of her mother.
Realize you were such a neighbor and I'm from Huntington, so.
Huntington, I'm originally from, I'm originally from Martin County, I was born and raised, but it's a Lawrence County superintendent.
Great.
If your son has only sees the world by buying, they'll make a million dollars.
So hot ticket item. Well, Dr. Fletcher, thank you so much. And I, you're the hot ticket item as you, uh, you know, start to meet folks and, and engage. So thank you all so much for, um, the engagement there as well. I hear you're gonna be around today perhaps, um. But just want to thank you for your time. We're gonna transition to our second agenda item. And apology, apologies, because this technology is just not agreeing with me today. So we're gonna try our best.
Is it Microsoft?
It is. Oh, oh, this is, it's changing on my screen. It's not changing up here. So I apologize if it's a little bit, uh, small. Um, we, we have the slides that you'll receive afterwards as well. So I, apologies, um, on the technology.
Well, good morning. It's good to be here again. We're good to see everybody again. For those, in case there are new folks, I'm Brian Perry. I serve as the director of government relations for the department. So I'm the legislative liaison. I help monitor all the legislation during the sessions, set up meetings with legislators, help get, uh, bill reviews and things like that back to legislators. So. Um, just to give you a scope, because, um, I've been trying to give people a little bit of an idea of the scope of, uh, what happens in Frankfurt. So this is a budget year, sixty day session. So we had about twelve hundred bills filed between the two chambers. So a lot of those bills are dead on arrival, right? They never go anywhere, but we still have to kind of monitor them. Um, we flagged about two hundred and fifty bills right out of the gate, um, that might impact education one way or the other. To put that in perspective, the homeless and housing coalition, there was a lot of housing bills this year. They flagged like sixty. So it gives you an idea of kind of the scope of what we monitor during the session. Um, the numbers are a little lower in off years during the thirty day, uh, odd year sessions. Um, but it's still a lot of legislation to monitor. Uh, we had about thirty bills that became law, um, that are related to education. We're not gonna go through all of them because it's a lot. Uh, but we'll try to touch on the ones that, uh, really impact you all as board members. Um, just kind of talk about some of the stuff. Anyway, I've been trying to, I, I give these speeches a lot, uh, as you can imagine, um, after the session until about now. Um, so I've been trying to remind people that, and a lot of that is because, uh, education's about sixty percent of the state budget. Um, so on top of all the social issues around education that we've been hearing about nationally, not just here in Kentucky. Um, you know, for us, it's a big part of the budget and that's a lot of the reason for the focus on it. Anyway, enough about that. We'll move along. Pull you to cover. Okay, so House Bill Two, constitutional amendments. Um, I just want to mention a couple of things about this because there was a lot of discussion about this as it moves through the process. So first, you probably can't read it because it's a little small, um, but when you see the slides, you'll see the ballot language. And that's important because this bill really only, um, opens the door potentially, right? Um, it's asking one question and that's whether they, whether. Kentuckians want to spend public tax dollars for private educations outside of the public common school system. That's all it asks. Um, if it is approved by voters in November, the general assembly will have to come back and then decide what next. Um, and obviously around the country, you see lots of models of what that might look like. Um, but House Bill Two doesn't specify any of that. Um, so none of that is known currently, like, so we got a lot of like, well, what will happen if this passes? We don't know. Um, so I just want to make that clear that right now, um, we have to wait till November, see what the vote is. If it is approved by voters in November, then the general assembly will have to sort of decide what path forward. So, yeah, that's, that's House Bill Two. Um, the other thing I want to mention here is, um, as board members. Um, I believe K S D A and some other groups have already pushed out or will be pushing out information about, um. Using, uh, local resources, um, like buildings, things like that, uh, as it relates to, uh. Habit to see for what against, um, the amendment. So just be aware that those are out there. Please pay attention. We heard, I got questions pretty much at the end of session, um, about, you know, those issues, um, some legislators. So people are kind of paying attention and watching, but we'd be aware of that.
Is it appropriate to discuss this at a board?
Yes. I think so.
I think K S B says.
They said that same like yesterday or before, they got a whole list, list of things you can do.
And I just wanted to, let you all make sure everybody knew that was out there. So please look at it as board members. It's gonna be very important.
It's one thing that's unknown, unknown. We don't know what they're gonna do if it passes. And I keep talking to our gates, and we gotta keep a relationship with them also.
Sure.
And Jason Neves is one of the biggest ones who lead this. I keep asking, what about local tax dollars? Now they're saying, they're saying, no, it will not follow us too. There's nothing in writing saying, no, it will not follow us.
Under, under the current laws that they passed before, because we had that application in Madison County. So under those laws that are still on the books today. The only reason that got shut down was because of the tax dollars. So they could go back, so LaFon Tang can just refile his application in Madison County. And everything is exactly the same because all the laws that he filed are, are still on the books. They didn't change any of those. So if this passes, all they gotta do is say, yes, and it's all good to go.
That, that's what scares me about it. And the second part is we've got to take and keep a relationship with all these politicians. And all of a sudden we come out, we say, I, I went to a Republican party meeting there. And I said, as far as I'm concerned, I'm totally against it. So all the people in the media, they're following what's Neves, David Osborne, all of them are saying. And I was a black child, a bad child that wanted, wanted to take out and whip. Because I was against it. So we gotta be careful because we've still got to keep our relationships up. With these politicians, but that, that local tax money is one that really scares.
It's also not just local tax money. It's also not just local tax money. So the way. Like the charter ball is written. Even once you, even if you approve it and the tax dollars go, your local park, your local. For vegetation is still responsible to keep up its monthly expenses. So you're gonna have, have to hire one financial person. Just to go through their books. Plus, you've got to hire a person to go over their. Educational materials, even though they hired somebody to do that. So there, you might hire about three to four people just to oversee. You all, you win.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, it's written right now.
It doesn't say anything about including homeschools or not including homeschools. So I mean, this could get way out of hand if it passes.
Just like Dr. Perry said, you know, it's just. This is just the. The open game. Once the gate is open. You know, of course, I, I share a few folks as I had to go through that confirmation process and I was. And I still got, got through, listen to me. Unfortunately, if there is a possibility that passes, like it does, how do we as a department make sure that that doesn't? Yeah. I'm the Commissioner of Public Schools. Absolutely. But on the other hand, too, is, as it goes through, it's gonna be interesting to see the rhetoric. Already, we've seen some. In Wiltley County, as a matter of fact, there were door knockers that went on doors that was just. And it was, and misinformation is. You wanna read those?
Yes. And this is this delivery, but all of it is really counting. Put Kentucky kids first, vote yes on Neva two. Kentucky parents and students deserve education freedom. Give parents more choice in their child's education, increase education funding, increase teacher pay. Protect public school funding, help low income and disabled students, more innovation in education policies. And then on the backup, on the other side, it says, our neighboring states have education freedom. Kentucky kids deserve it too. Vote yes on Neva two. And yes, vote on Neva two, improve education for Kentucky students, empower homeschool parents and help cottage schools.
That's an improvement takes money away.
And when you, when people read that, they think, yeah, this is.
When we went through, when we went through LaFon Tang's charter application, just to give you an idea, it took forever. We get to. A lot of money for us to go through the application. We found a hundred eighty one efficiencies. That did not meet legislature's. Not only that, so. He charges, because he has a private school in that. And he charges sixty five hundred dollars a year tuition. And his teacher don't make as much as our teacher. But yet, somehow, you know, he's gonna pay his teacher more than we pay. For less money per job. But they can't charge tuition for a charge. And the, the whole way it's set up is, and it is a hundred percent the money right for whoever's spending the school because. He owned, he was gonna own the building, rent the building to the school. He was in charge of the educational materials that he was gonna rent to the schools. So he's paying himself that, paying himself money. Plus, he's paying himself to be the administrator.
So you're going back to Dr. Perry.
It, it is, as I said, we went through it and we found a hundred and eighty one efficiencies. On that picture. And so when we, we would have denied it because it's hundred eighty one efficiencies.
Well, the interest of uh time, we'll, we'll move along. All right, like maybe. I don't know, what I.
First topic.
All right, so Senate Bill Two was, so and just as a reminder, the lower the bill number, the higher the priority, generally speaking, for that chamber. Senate Bill Two was a high priority bill from Senator Wise. It was a follow up to his School Safety and Resiliency Acts. I think from twenty nineteen, predates my time in secondary. Uh I was post-secondary at that time. Um, couple of things to note here. There's a lot of language in here about the guardians. So these are not SROs, but the guardians, that's not our lane. Um, but the Center for School Safety and the State Schools Marshall should be talking to you all in your districts about that. There's a lot of conversations around those guardians. Um, maybe a little more concern about the guardians than I would have, as anticipated. Some also some little health components there, but that guardian is um a big one related to this. They also did put money in the budget for SROs. So we will be doing a reimbursement for SROs. It's up to twenty thousand dollars per campus. Um, there's been some conversations around that language, but that is what is in the budget. Uh so that's what we'll be doing.
Okay, let me assess it. Yeah, for school, for SRO.
We have a campus that has a elementary, a middle and a high school that they all.
So, and they may, they may change that in the next session and change it, but you would only get twenty thousand dollars.
And, and yeah, that's what'll be clear. The department is following the bill language. So if they would like to change it to per SRO. That's their problem. We're fine with that. But the bill language as it seems is per campus. Yeah, um, so, so that's tied to that. So SB eleven was a juvenile justice bill. The real intent here was to close the gap. From the time one of your students might get involved with the local justice system, in the time your district is notified. Um, as I understood, there was a, like, be a quite substantial gap. Um, so you had a student that got involved. Juvenile justice system over the weekend for potentially violent offense. Your district's not being notified until, you know, ten, twelve, thirteen days later. Um, that's what Senator Schickel was trying to do, was reduce the time that, um, it takes for you all to be notified of those serious offenses. Um, so just make you aware of that. Um, we'll skip down a little bit. Um, Senate Bill Two sixty five. Um, make some changes to teacher, teacher certification pathways. They continue to tweak those a little bit. Um, the, the interesting part here was one of, one of the committee subs and almost every bill of the session had at least one committee sub, which made it real exciting. Um, we talked a lot from last fall when Robin Kenny started as our commissioner. Um, until Dr. Fletcher arrived, uh as we met with folks about the need for some sort of replacement for K TIP. Um, and Kate Pip, for that matter. Um, so the Teacher Induction Program and the Principal Induction Program. Uh, we've heard a lot from the field that, uh, there's a lack of consistency in funding. Um, so we finally got some language saying authorizing um CDE. And the EPSB to develop a new teacher induction program. Unfortunately, they didn't put any money toward it. Um, so I think what will probably happen is that EPSB and OELE will work. Um, to kind of put together a model of what they would like to put out there, and then we'll start to advocate for some funding for that in the next round. Um, because they do need a, it does need some funding attached to it. Um, but the good news is, I think they're hearing us, um, and realize that we need some sort of mentoring program. Um, as I understand it, uh, CPIT got amended, uh, right, or K TIP got amended right before the funding season. Um, so I don't know if they will look at. Kind of starting there as a starting point. Um, we haven't had a lot of conversation about that yet.
So that'll, that'll be true. It, it's exciting. EPSB is.
There's a couple of other workforce initiatives that they, uh, did this session that we'll get to. Um, so I was actually pretty excited about how things kind of shook out by the end of the session in terms of teacher workforce. We've been talking about it. For the two and a half years that I've been at KDE, so excited to see some movement. Uh, House Bill Twenty Two, there's two AED bills, um. Ruthanne Colombo, long, long time representative from Lexington area, retired. Uh, AEDs have been one of her uh projects, and so they gave her a couple of big wins, uh, going out the door, I think. Um, so House Bill Twenty Two removes the medical oversight requirement for AEDs uh in your schools. Uh, and then there's another one that provides that. Well, we'll get to it. Um, then House Bill Forty Two, or One Forty Two, was a big anti vaping bill. Um, I was very fortunate that the department got to be involved in this kind of from the get go. Um, so we had a lot of input. Um, we saw it get amended a few times along the way, and I think we ended up in a fairly good place. It was pretty prescriptive earlier. Um, and pretty punitive uh for students. We got that changed a little bit along the way so that it gives your schools a little more flexibility. Um, for prevention and um intervention and not just uh punitive measures. Um, so we really wanna focus on keeping the kids in the school building, um, and getting them the help they need. So. That's part of that bill. CHFS actually reached out this week because they're getting a lot of questions because it requires. Uh districts to provide cessation materials and things like that. Um, so they wanna help provide those tradings for. Uh, so, so we're working on that. So look for more um resources coming related to House Bill One Forty Two here shortly. And I apologize, please feel free to jump in with questions. Um, I kind of forget sometimes that not everybody spends their entire life in the Capitol Annex, talking about this stuff, so.
So on the anti vaping bill. It, in the future, maybe, you know, next session or something, there are always ads. We have these, they have detectors that we can put in the bathroom to detect the text of vaping. We've got, and they're great because when they go off, sends the principal a text message on his phone. So it does go off. So then you just go in there.
Yeah.
And we've got cameras pointed at the doors.
Yeah.
So you see what kids go in, what kids come out.
Yeah.
And then he can just go straight there and pull the tape, see who went in, who set off the detector.
Okay.
And so it would be nice if, you know, if they're so anti vaping and, you know, wanting to make a law about it. That there is a, also a part of a solution to that also, instead of just. Yeah, help us.
Well, strangely, I don't know that, I listened to a lot of conversations about this during the session. I don't know that that, the detectors ever.
I don't know who knows what you talked about. Probably three years ago.
One of the things that we've, you know, found is the benefit of our weapons detection system. Uh, that evolved system, this is fixing.
It looks, it looks just like a smoke behavior in the background, so they don't really, kids don't know it.
Yeah.
And it just, it's discreetly sensitive.
My thing is that we had, we had several kids who we ended up putting out because of vaping. But the parents are blaming them for the pill. That seems to be the biggest problem. It's the kids don't have the money. The parents are blaming them.
Yeah.
This one lady self told us, well, uh, it wasn't but a few more plus left on it, so I gave it to her. And I'm like, lady, please. I mean, seriously, I mean, that, that's the problem right there, isn't it? It's at the house. I mean, what they do there, they think they can come to the school and do it. And we have different set of rules. And then the parents look at you like, well, I'll let them do it. Why y'all putting them out?
Parents think it's, they, they sold them for vaping pads. It's better than smoking, when actually it's worse. Worse and, because, you know, well, I'm. In EMT, you know, we go through all this stuff and it, it's worse on your life. We just, we just allow it. And so parents, you know, they're like, well, that's better than smoking.
We're just lying with parents out shooting. I mean, it's just frustration to me.
Bring back the uh smoking pass. I'm, I'm, I don't look at, but I'm old enough that my first years of high school, we had a. We had a designated smoking area outside of the cafeteria. It's still blows my mind.
Well, the fun part was he was always out there with the teachers and the students.
Is, is not just the vaping, but the CBD.
Yes.
They get high.
Right.
And they don't know they're getting high and they're going to the classroom. No, when they're falling over, they're taking good test marks or only, they're just positive. So they get out of school one time, they come back here, and the second time, the first time, they come to the door, good spell to, to go. And that, that's the big issue. And I'm supposed, they're supposed to be eighteen to there.
Well, the technology market too, you know, now you have students that they wear a hoodie, with those strings that are in it. The hoodie. Aglet people draw it is really a debate. And it's gonna be their hoodies. And then they'll blow it into back into the sweatshirt.
I know that. We had, we had one guy that was so high on the back that he passed out in the school.
All right, well, on a slightly more positive note, we'll go to House Bill One Sixty Two. So Chair Tipton. Uh, if you'll remember, passed the Read to Succeed Act with uh Chair West in the Senate. Last session, uh, so that was a nice. On early literacy, uh, they really wanted to do something related to early numeracy, uh, to follow up on that. That's House Bill One Sixty Two. Uh. We got fortunate that they tacked on a ten million dollar appropriation for the biennium very late in the session, but happy to see that go through. One concern here is, you know, at what point are they getting too far down in the limits? I mean, we've certainly heard that from some of our state board members, um, some others. So. There's a balancing act there. On one hand, I'm, I'm happy to see ten million dollars towards early math education. Um, but there is some concern, and I just wanted to sort of put that out there that. We're aware of it. Uh, there are conversations around it. As some of the members like to tell me that, that the Kentucky General Assembly, they can do whatever they wanna do. So we'll try to. How to have those conversations, but I'm not sure how.
So we have.
There, there's not as much funding tied to it because there's a lot of extra dollars I've had with the, uh. I think it was twenty five million was with the numeracy, whereas there's ten million. I'm sorry, early literacy and twenty five and numeracy. But anyway, so it's not gonna be as much, but uh, I will say this, the. What we're hearing back about the training letters has been, has changed a lot of the baseline, a lot of the innovative. So if that success continues, maybe we have more. But also too, it's a balancing. Uh, how, how far, how far in the lead to legislators go? And telling you what to teach. I'm, I'm not gonna go tell any of them how to run their contractors. How, when there's, uh, you know, their law businesses. So. And again, I think there's a lot of goodwill and good. Good intentions, what they do, but also balance.
Yeah, uh, One Sixty Nine is the other AED bill that I mentioned, and it requires the AEDs in all school buildings and at. Uh sanctioned athletic events. Um, I believe that our Office of Finance and Operations is working on a reimbursement program. Uh, to distribute the money they provided for those, uh, there'll be a reimbursement. We don't wanna, we're just gonna, let's keep track of it. Uh, we'll skip down a little bit here. So House Bill Three Seventy Seven, um, here's some budget language, and this has the workforce initiatives. These are not housed under KDE, but I think they're really important to mention. So they did three things. So in budget language, they doubled the amount of money from the existing teacher scholarship. It went from one million to two million. They created a paid student teaching pilot program. It's very exciting. That's something we've been talking about again since I've been around. Um, so very excited to see that happen, especially with a significant amount of funding behind it. Um, then they also created something they called the Student Loan Forgiveness Program. The name's not very good, but it's not really student loan forgiveness. Um, it's gonna be very similar to the existing teacher scholarship, so. I'm still a little confused on that one. Uh, but those are three workforce initiatives. Again, I'm very excited to see them get done. Um, so, uh, those will be through CIA, that's the Higher Ed uh Agency in Kentucky. Um, so they will be putting out more information on those programs. And then, um, so Four Forty Six does require, if you'll see there at the bottom. Um, you will be required to adopt a new transportation services policy. I'm not sure if KSBA has pushed out the new model policies yet, uh, but I'm sure it'll be included in those. I think everybody's now participating, so it should be covered. We'll try to get through the rest of these. We got one more slide. Um, another one that will require board action at some point is Five Thirty Five, that's the Civics Education Bill. Um, so they gave you a couple of options, uh, but before next school year, you're gonna have to decide whether you're gonna have a half credit. Required civics course or um stay with the existing test, but the threshold goes up to seventy percent pass rate. So, but they gave you two options. Better than just telling me what to do, I suppose. Um. The test is already out there. I don't know who designed it, actually. So I can find out.
Have you taken? I have taken some.
Uh, so seven. So just to kind of have the quick ones that I'll mention, uh, Seven Twenty Seven is, again, this one's the one that doubled up. They, they. Extended the provisions of House Bill Six Seventy Eight, uh, from two years ago, which gave. Extended the provisions of House Bill six seventy-eight, uh, from two years ago, which gave districts, um, the instruction flexibility that you all asked for. So that sunset, that, that was going to sunset at the end of June, um, so they extended it through, um. For two years in the budget, in three years, and seven twenty-seven, so you should be covered for. Somewhere between two and three years, it's a little confusing as to which, uh, takes precedence, since they put it in both, but. We're at least covered for the next two years, that's good. Um, and then. So randomly, in four forty-nine, which actually was the only bill really focused on local boards of education that passed, it was really geared around. Um, ethics training, um, but it picked up a really odd amendment late that removes the number, removes that limitation on the number of depositories that districts can use. Um, so, um, for those of you that have lots of money laying around, they need to spread it around, there you go, so.
We've really benefited from that for air.
Yeah.
It really, we've been able to go out and get really good rates.
Yeah.
And especially where we got a lot of construction funding coming in. We have to go out and invest it, and that's really, maybe some laws and old nickel money that go.
All right, the last, so the last one I'll mention in the interest of time, so House Bill eight twenty-nine was the medicinal cannabis bill. And this is important because it will require each local board of education to establish policies related to the use of medical cannabis by a pupil. Who is a registered qualified patient on school property by December one of this year. Um, and then establish basic standards for school policies related to medical cannabis, so. I think you'll, I think boards will have the option of saying, no medical cannabis on campuses, within the district. Or yes, and here's the provisions for that, um, so I just want to make you all aware of that one, because that's going to be a biggie, I imagine, for folks, so.
In the last session, it was actually that he checked. And, you know, with the cannabis, you had to have a policy in place in that.
The scary thing about the medical cannabis. Is you're allowed on campus, and say your school bus drivers are, it's got a medical thing, under the DOT, with the CDL license. They can't use it, so now you've got a, a quagmire there, well, you're a school bus driver, which can't use. Even though. You gotta be careful about that policy.
I just didn't mention about the superintendent's. What were you shown together, and we asked our, our superintendent, we just, you know, to. But what are the other superiors? And you shouldn't talk about that, so we really did. You kind of pull us together, and you're just asking, picture practice. But what you feel and what that super needs is two different things. But the doctor says you, you know what it means, but it's medically. There, then you have to think, okay, then, they have permission to use it, what are we going to do?
You have a nurse.
Administrator, yes.
Administrator too.
Yes.
Now, talk about collaboration, all of Kentucky has a strong, to, to, to.
So the last thing I'll say is, just as a reminder, uh, we do push out guidance, overall guidance for all the bills that pass related to education. Um, you see the link there, we also do supplemental guidance, it comes out from our various offices about different, uh, pieces of legislation. All of those are housed in one, uh, link, that first link there, we have a legislative guidance page, um, that I put up a couple of years ago. So everything's there in one place, um, so if you don't know which office to look for, you can always just go there, just email.
And you'll get these slides as well, so all these links will be in your hands.
And I'll stick around, so if you all have any questions at break, anything like that, please feel free to let me know, otherwise I will always see you all in soon. For a legislative brief.
One thing, just want to say, if we're, if we're, Dr. Barry and I have a lunch.
Kevin Jackson.
Kevin Jackson here, so really, I apologize first.
And. So, no, around, so somebody mentioned the accountability around English language learners, um, that had picked up some interesting theme in the last. Few months, um, Kevin Jackson, a representative here in Warren County, he actually thought a bill about that this session, um, kind of got the conversation going, but. Um, it is certainly on the radar, um, with some legislators, so, um, just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that.
Funding too.
That's also been a topic of conversation, thanks again.
Uh, on the requested agenda for this meeting today was, uh, school safety in particular, bullying resources are available through the agency, um. No one better be talked to all about that, uh, than like Connie on our, um, who is a safety support schools branch. So I'm going to pass it over to him for about ten minutes to walk through some research.
All right, well, first off, thanks for inviting me here, um, it really says a lot that you are interested in this topic, um. Dr. Fletcher's vision is that there's all in, and bullying prevention really is an all-in issue, it's something that has been. Part of schools slash part of society for, forever, uh, since there's been two people in the room, um, in the forest, and so, um. We got, you know, so we need to work together, we need all hands on deck to really address this issue, and so I'm going to give you all some of the, I guess, legal requirements that you all have as a board. And then, more importantly, give you some resources or things that you can look for in your schools to make sure these things are being acted. So state statute, um, again, I'll be very brief, because I have about ten minutes now, um, so really it breaks down to this, so. ARS, um, defines bullying involves an aggressive behavior, um, it, it. Comes from an imbalance of power or strength, or let me say this, it can be perceived imbalance in power. So if I perceive you as having more power than myself, it puts you in a position that you could, you know, bully. Uh, and then it has a pattern of re, being repeated or potential to be repeated, which is very important, and kind of hard to. Sometimes tease out what that means, um, and then as a former principal, like, I relied on this a lot, so this. Point here says it's something that disrupts the educational process, and so that really gives us a lot of jurisdiction and leeway within our schools to address this. Um, you know, you're talking to a student or a parent, like, well, this happened over the weekend, well, the students, you know, are in school together today, and one feels. My bully or feels this. So that gives, you know, allows us as school members to, to address that. Uh, the requirements are kind of a low bar, so the state requirements or the statutory requirements are that you have a. Code, or in your code, kind of book, defines, uh, what bullying is, uh, it sets a, a way to report that. And then has a requirement to all to have a process to report that, uh, to the parents or a guardian. So again, a pretty low bar, um, and I think all code comics have that. But if it was, if that was it, you know, so every district has that code, every district has, you know, some policy against bullying, but still we're seeing, these are the rates, so this actually just came out last week or two weeks ago. Uh, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, uh, which is done every other year, so we got, we just got results from last year. And so this is a survey that goes out to, instead of CDC, goes out to schools throughout the state. Uh, so right now, middle school students in the last twelve months, report forty-one percent of the surveyed students report that they've experienced bullying. In the school building in the past twelve months. Electronically or cyberbullying, so twenty-nine percent of middle school students are reporting that they've experienced electronic bullying. At the high school level, uh, we see twenty-two percent and eighteen percent respectively. Those numbers are, are very high. Um, they've held consistent since this, since this study's been, or survey's been given, starting in two thousand nine, two thousand eleven. Um, these numbers have stayed basically the same, so we'll see a one or two percent kind of flow, um, but basically untouched. So this is not a new phenomenon, um, even cyber, or, you know, electric cyberbullying hasn't released any uptake that I think we all thought we'd see. Uh, we found during the pandemic, found the pandemic, um, it still held relatively the same. So again, if it was an easy issue, these numbers wouldn't, would, would be going down. So I want you to think for, and again, for time's sake, I'm going to give you just maybe thirty seconds, just to think through. What are some of the practices that you see here that you know your schools are doing in prevention? So upfront. Intervention, so in the moment, or postvention, after an issue happens, after an event happens. I'm not going to ask you, just think about it just for a second.
Well, no, I don't like conventions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We have got full-time paid police officers, so there's, we should go, yeah. So if it's boot-term fights, which could be assaults.
Hmm.
Or it's due to gun, or any of that stuff. He only, he stops it for us, to, to our part, but he's also, since he's a paid full-time cop, he's got to do his. Don't do diligence as cops, and now this kid may have to go through the court system, which brings the parents in, that shows him Johnny isn't as good as he used to be.
Yeah, yeah.
And that gets around, and believe me, that stops a lot of, of, of the court system getting bought.
Yeah, so. Let me say this, so as the Safe Schools Data Steward, I see all the Safe Schools data comes through. Uh, last year, or two years ago, we've had nineteen thousand events that were filed in different campuses, so ninety thousand. Um, reports that principals or assistant principals put into any campus that reported. That's all, thank you, yes, so nineteen thousand, but, so let's, let's take a step back at this, so nineteen thousand events. Those are the ones we seek, so bullying can be overt, it can be something, you know, pushing, shoving, a fight, those are the easy ones.
Yeah, that's the easy.
And, and those are prob, those are the nineteen thousand, we have a ton more that are just a comment in the hallway, you know, some tests. And those are the hard ones to address, and, or those are the ones that are getting overlooked, so there's a huge gap in. If forty-one percent of our students, or what's browned down, let's just say twenty percent of our students are prosecuted, are experiencing bullying. We have over six hundred thousand students in safe. Uh, you know, so right there, we're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand bullying events, if it was just a one-time thing. So if point check, our experience that we're in a hundred and twenty thousand events, there's a huge gap in what. We're reporting and what's actually happening, and that's, honestly. The only fault there is that we are just not putting the effort up front to address. Um, a lot of times you hear schools say, we have zero tolerance. I get phone calls from parents in your school districts, they call and say, hey, my, my students experiencing this, the district has a zero tolerance policy, policy, that kid should be gone. But they're not, you know, zero tolerance doesn't work. And it's, we think of it as a punitive after the fact, we need to move that zero tolerance upfront, so that when somebody hears it, they address it. And that person doesn't have to get troubled, you know, if it's just a, a passing comment, maybe it could be something small or a small slight. It doesn't have, we don't have to. Rain down on that, but we have to address it, and we have to teach our, our adults in the building, is that, hey, we don't talk that way here, we're not going to, we're not going to have that. So I don't.
Um, so you guys don't, you all don't, you don't, just do my, those are the nice thing?
So, but sorry, this is the, the, sorry, the, the, for this data. This is, the, the, the YRBS, because it's focused on risky behaviors, it's just the event to a middle access, we do have other data points out there, um, none that I brought up.
I was going to mention. So much of it starts young, so you have some social, emotional learning, if you have some sort of justice, even with young children. You know, learning how to get along, you know, and how to collaborate. It's like accepting that you did something that hurt someone. Not physically, but, and then knowing how to, you know, apologize and.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a great point, I think, and I think SEL is a huge step forward, uh, because. Until we change the culture of our buildings, we're not going to even touch bullying, it's still.
So unfortunately, we've had a couple of suicides, and then we've also had, you know, parents have come to, for the biggest explain. So all of our, I'm going to say bad incidences.
Yeah.
After we've done our research and followed through and figured out why it happened, what led up to it, we have come. To ninety percent of hours is after-schools. Online bullying, Snapchat, whatever, uh. How do we address that, you know, because it's after-school, you know, we're not wrong with that, you know? You know, and it's, it's off school campus, they're not, you know, we went back and looked to see if the kid was even, you know, after-school stuff. It's all very, oh, they're street.
Yeah, absolutely, so, I think. As a former school administrator, we have to think, what's within our control, and I think that's the hard part, you know, I would tell teachers that all the time. I'm, we're not going to deal with all that extra baggage, but what is within your control, what can you control within these four walls, so let's see that. If you all thought about it, I would, I would venture to say that there's a lot, not a lot of. Prevention, and we don't teach our teachers how to intervene in the moment. We don't say, hey, when this happens, here's how you address it.
You said that, that is right.
And see, and who ever follow us afterwards, you know, we, I mean, the students with teachers, and teachers like, saw nothing.
And that there is, yeah.
They've been talking to friends of kids.
One of these things, we won't embrace the six stone stones, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be debunked.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, so two other things, programs and, I guess, that's all right, so two other programs I want to just. Put out there, uh, so Sources of Strength is a. Against evidence-based, because we need that, we have to know everything, you need to be researched, everything, evidence-based, so Sources of Strength is an evidence-based program that is. It works kind of the upstream of mental health supports, bullying prevention, suicide prevention. Um, it actually started as a suicide prevention, uh, program, and has now had the research done to support that it affects. Has a positive impact on bullying, um, as well as self-harmous use, uh, and really can change the culture of the school. That is a program that I can one hundred percent stand behind, you know, again, as a former administrator, it is something that is not a heavy lift. On our teachers or administration, um, it's really peer-focused and peer-led, um.
What is that name again?
So that is called Sources of Strength, and again, I'll put out these here too, so I've got Sources of Strength information here, um. So I'll put both these up here before, before we're done, uh, and that's something that. Many, we have, we've tried, at this point, I've trained over a hundred schools in Kentucky, um. It's awesome, it is really, it's teaching students to focus on their strengths, to, uh, destigmatize, uh, mental health supports. To increase our help-seeking behaviors, so how do we get help when we need it, um, that could be for. Uh, an emotional crisis, or it could be in the situation of a bullying, uh, situation, and then how do we as peers support each other? To either get the help that we need and deserve, or, uh, to rely on our strengths to be more resilient. Uh, and so that's a fantastic program, and, uh, something that I can one hundred percent, uh, stand behind.
Who did you, who was like the one person who you trained, like, what, I'm not normal, but I mean, what was.
Uh, so, sorry, so Sources of Strength, the way it's, the way it's designed is that we go to a school, we train a group of five to ten adults, we call them adult advisors. And then they, they invite, the school invites. Anywhere from five to ten of their, of their student population, uh, with the goal of having every subgroup represent. So we don't want just like the leaders in the building, or, we want, you know, we want the kids that are getting college bags in the bathroom. We want kids that are in band, we want kids that are, they said every lunch table in the cafeteria, because we believe this message is so important, it needs to reach every corner of our building. Um, and so, again, it's, it goes through, we teach a small group of adults that support the students, and then we train. Anywhere from eighty to thirty to fifty students, um, and then they take that initiative and they run, um. Coordinated campaigns throughout the school year to get the message out, to, um. Teach their peers how to get help, teach their peers what they can do if they need help, um, and really just create, and focus on their strengths to be more resilient. So a really fantastic program. So, yeah, with that said, I'm going to.
I don't want to.
And I'm going to leave you all with, I guess, these, both these pieces of information, they have contacts on there, so if you want to reach out to, um, the contacts on here or myself. We'd be happy to work with your schools, get them the information they need, uh, but. Everyone in our, everyone in our school district needs to kind of make a priority and, and just support this, uh, this work.
Yes.
And this, I mean. These are great programs, there are a ton of great programs out there, um, I would just say, you just don't want those columns empty. What are we doing to, you know, prevention, what are we doing to intervening or teaching adults to intervene? And then how are we supporting after the fact, after an issue? How do we support not just like the victim or the perpetrator, but everybody who witnessed that, and how are we, how are we. Gaining that trust back in this, you know, with them, so I'm going to leave these here, maybe I'll put them by the muffins. Muffins and information, yes. Yes, I appreciate you all having us here, thank you.
Blake, thank you also for hanging in there on time and in presentation, we have a fantastic new camera here, and so that big bulky one that you've probably seen. Unfortunately, you cannot charge your computer and have that running at the same time, so we have this, uh, quite a dilemma to fix here. Um, I'm just going to say this really in passing, um, to respect your time and, and the other events that you have going on today. Um, I'm going to pass out a resource for you, feel free to, uh, you know, fantastic weekend reading, uh, if you, you know, want to find a spot in the shade and enjoy this. Um, but truly, what is captured in our new innovation guide, um, uh, came out of some focus groups with district leaders, um, in our Kentucky Innovative Learning Network, our local. Um, in our Kentucky Innovative Learning Network, our local laboratories of learning, many of which is represented here in this room by your own districts. Um, and this gives us a look at six action areas within current, the current policy landscape. Where Kentucky schools and districts are finding space to do innovative things in the way of portrait of a learner, teacher credentialing, student micro-credentialing. Um, so you can see there at the beginning, uh, there are six key action areas, creating portraits of a learner, local assessment and accountability. Uh, funding to support personalization, leveraging graduation requirement flexibilities, organizing and credentialing learning. As well as rethinking teacher certification and professional development. So if any of those are piquing your interest, or if you're thinking, ah, man, we'd love to do that, we just didn't think we could. This guide is really intended to lay out the current policy that we can start to see less as a barrier and more for the possibilities that it gives us. To think more flexibly, flexibly about the personalized learning we can bring to students and how our systems can start to shift. Even if our policy, uh, landscape does not change to make it, uh, you know, to feel more conducive to those environments. Um, so just take a look at this guide sometime. I do want to highlight that for every action area, there's at least one district spotlight. That goes deeply based on interviews and site visits into what that looks like for those communities. So please use this as a starting point, explore this, feel free to share this, there's also a version on our KDE website. Um, and please, please, please reach out if you're, um, thinking, man, this, we want in on this, uh, model, this strategy. Uh, you can reach out to me, I have a regional team that's brand new, they can jump in, they can support you in any of this work. Uh, if you just need a thought partner in how to, uh, bring this to your board, we're more than happy to have discussions with you as well, uh, regarding the content of this guide. Uh, but I hope it's a great conversation starter and a learning tool for you and your communities. Uh, I want to, um, give Chair Webster a moment, if you have anything, uh, to add to our group here, but do want to leave. Uh, this on the screen for you in closing today. Thank you so much for always contributing, um, ideas for our speakers. We want this group to be as relevant for you as possible and timely to the issues, um, and just topics of conversation that are on your minds as local board members. Um, so please use this as a chance to suggest future meeting topics for us, we'll meet again with you in Louisville in December. At the next convening for KSBA, and so we will work, uh, far in advance to meet your needs and make sure that we have, uh, speakers secured and, and ready to go for you all. At those events, so that QR code, as well as the link that'll come to an email with these slides will be available. Just encourage you, even if you don't give us some feedback on this session today, just jump in there and add any thoughts that you have on, on future meeting items. Chair Webster, anything you'd like to say in closing?
For time's sake, registration's open, that's why I'm going to take a lot of time, I just want to thank all of you all for serving on this committee, like the commissioner, the president today, for the information that you gave.
It's good.
Here for you.
This one was good.
To have you input and help us have any good reviews, right? Thanks, Lori, and Sarah, for your work with us. And again, we're going to meet at the hall house this year. Very, I don't know, town, so we're going to be meeting next, but hope all of you have a good conference. Uh, one, we'll take a lot of that to the history, so just thank you, Lori.
Thank everybody here, thanks for coming in, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you for your patience.